Good evening, welcome, thank you for coming. Call the City Council Committee of the whole meeting for Wednesday, March 20th, 24 to order. This time we'll have a moment of silence for you to think about what it is you need to think about tonight. If everyone please stand and join Alderman Dunn in leading us all in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Which one?
Mr. Rick Dunn, sorry.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Rick Dunn. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll.
R. Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Reinhardt?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Lynch?
Here.
T. Dunn?
Here.
Jobson?
Here.
And Burkholder?
Here.
Ten President, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening, everyone, and welcome. As we begin the meeting of the Committee of the whole City Council meeting, I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance, anybody who's watching with any particular electronic device. Respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, but ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share, to make Davenport a better place. If you have a cellphone, especially for the folks in here, if you just put it on silent, please, so it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. Love to know your name, order, or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. If you'd like to address the council, please address the council as a body and not anyone individual, same with the staff. Ask that everyone please observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste, and please don't disrupt the meeting. We want to hear from everyone. Thank you. Ms. Merritt, is there any city administrator update tonight?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Very good. We have five public hearings, one under community development, three under Public Works, and one under Finance. The first one will be community development. Alderman Gripp will lead. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public... Alec. For year 50, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG funds. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Thank you, Brian. I'll reread it. I open the public hearing on the recommended allocations for year 50, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG funds. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward. You have five...
Kerry Eklund, I live in Davenport, Iowa. I don't really know where it's going. I'm not going to speak against any of the agencies that are receiving funds, although I would personally, if it was up to me, know not-for-profit would pay anyone more than twice the minimum wage and still have not-for-profit status. A lot of not-for-profits pay their executives way over $100,000 a year, which to me is outrageous. People who work in the private sector can work full-time and live in complete and total poverty, and yet people who sit at the top of so-called not-for-profit organizations can rake in over $10,000 a month, which to me is outrageous. So if there are any of these agencies that are paying their executives over $10,000 a month, I would speak in opposition to that. I just would also recommend that, I know they go to not-for-profits and then it funnels through their executives and their employees and then to whoever they're going to help. I wish some of this money could go directly to people who were, say, in danger of foreclosure because they were crime victims.
Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Next area is Public Works. Alderman Dunn will lead. Alderman Dunn, Rick Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the first public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Garfield Park ADA access improvement project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing?
Kerry Eklund, I still live in this city. I spent 10 years of my life working full-time with people with disabilities and living in poverty the entire time. I did a lot of physical therapy at that time. They would take the people to the doctors, this is to do with Americans with Disabilities part of this, they would take the people to the doctors, they would say, "Do these exercises, because if your arm," and some of this will probably relate maybe to some of this even, "but if your arm is like this, you can still feed yourself and drink, and then if your arm becomes like this, then you can't." So as you know, they will recommend physical therapy exercises. Well, the people who do that get paid a lot of money, but then the people in the nursing homes or the facilities for people with disabilities or the personal care attendants who actually do the physical therapy exercises can do that and live in intense poverty and not qualify for city programs. This is apparently some sort of Americans with Disability Access Improvement. I am all in favor of anything that they spend in the parks or the city for Americans with Disabilities access. I do feel the need to point out that one of the arguments that I had with the city was not only to declare all fruit trees and blueberries illegal in my yard, they specifically...
Could you stick to the, please stick to the item?
I don't know whether they're going to do any wheelchair accessible gardens here, because I'm a big advocate for wheelchair accessible gardens, and if they have the opportunity to do wheelchair accessible gardens anywhere in the city, in the schools, the parks, anywhere, I would highly recommend wheelchair accessible gardens, and I would point out that that lawyer declared it illegal for me to build.
Mr. Eklund?
Yes, sir.
Please stick to the topic and don't point out anybody, the staff or otherwise.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, let me just say, I believe that wheelchair accessible gardens are obviously legal. I called the city when they talked to planning and zoning, and if you call the city and you say, you know, "I want to build a shed," or "I want to build a garden," or "I want to grow tomatoes in flowerpots," and they will tell you whether they're legal or not. So I would just say, I hope that you all recognize that wheelchair accessible gardens are legal, and if that's part of this project, I applaud it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Colony Drive Reconstruction Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and I open the third public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Colony Drive Western Avenue to Ripley Street Reconstruction Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Rick Dunn. The last public hearing is under Finance, and Alderwoman Newton will lead. Alderwoman Newton, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So, public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of costs for the skate park improvements project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Please state your name, address, or ward.
Derek Cornet, 7th Ward. Good to have you back, Mayor. Missed you. Anyway, last time I saw an estimate for improvements to the skate park, it was over $1 million. It was like $1.2 million. So I'm sure the estimate's going to go up now. Do we really need to spend over $1 million to fix the skate park? I just sit there and look at the place, you know, go down there, and I can only imagine watching the kids there at night, and I know it's a great place for people to go and skate and everything, that's wonderful, but the other things they're doing there, you know, you can see drug deals going down and things like that, and I just don't, you know, we're not picking up on that. So if we're not going to do any enforcement in keeping that clean, you know, who wants to go down there and use it? So, over $1 million, I don't think so. So, you know, when it comes back, think about it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? Seeing none, I would move to close this meet, or this hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I yield the floor back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton. Next is, sorry, next is petitions and communications with council and mayor. I just have a couple thank-yous. I want to thank Alderwoman McGinnis for filling in for me, and then thank Alderwoman, I'm sorry, Alderman Gripp to come with the chamber and myself and others out to DC to talk with a lot of the departments there to get some grants and our respective enlisted. It was a wonderful meeting. And then thank Alderwoman Newton and Alderwoman Lynch, Ms. Merritt, Ms. Spasha, and Mr. Dean for talking with our bond agencies, Moody's, and S&amp;P. Great presentation, great information, and appreciate all of these folks' time and efforts to help the city either potentially get grants or monies or better programs, but taking the time out of their day to go a little further and do that extra work. It means a lot, so thank you very much. And I see Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. Just a reminder that March 28th, I'm having a night out with the Aldermen, which will be, I'll say it next week, but I have it on the internet. I think it's 1715 North Harrison Street. I'll be in a couple different boutiques on Harrison Street, 563 Vintage and Keisha Couture, and once again, that'll be a night out with the Aldermen, March 28th, starting at 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to talk about a couple of things that came up at the City Council meeting or last week with the Committee of the whole. There was some information claimed that memorandums of understanding or MOUs are not legally binding, and I just wanted to point out that when there is remuneration involved in an MOU, it is legally binding and legally binding in a court, so the information that they are not was incorrect. There can be MOUs that are agreements between people or agencies to work together on, you know, a strategic plan or something like that, but there are MOUs that are legally binding, and this was an exchange of services for financial remuneration. I also was, there was a speaker last week talking about the employment background of our interim city manager managed to skip over entirely her educational background in terms of college, which was disappointing, and so it was inferred that somehow this person went from working at a food franchise as a teenager to jobs at City Hall. That's incorrect. She holds a master's degree of public administration from Auburn University and a bachelor's of science from Barry College. Now, that's not to say that everybody who works well and has a job has to go to college at all, and it's, and there's certainly no shame in any teenager having a job and making their own money. I did it, I know many of the people in this, who are listening in, and many of the people who are here tonight also did that, and we had to do it. And so I also don't want to disrespect that, but the fact that it would go from a high school job to suddenly working with, missing the six years or so of education is, I'm sorry, disappointing, and I apologize to Ms. Merritt for that. The other thing I wanted to point out was there was a speaker that talked about a term that was used, which is sort of an unattractive term for funding, and it was said at an open budget meeting that seemed to be being attributed to staff. That was in fact used by an elected official. I don't believe that elected official meant to cause harm with that, but it, or was malicious, but it was a term not used by staff, and it would never be used by staff. I want to, I did not use that term, but I want to apologize that I did not point that out at the time, and I will certainly, if that happens again, take the responsibility of doing that. So, thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Jobson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few things here. One, a little bit more benign than the other, as I've done on my time on council. If I have a family member, friend, or loved one who happens to have a birthday on the date of a meeting, I shot them out, and I would be in significant trouble if I missed recognizing my wife on her birthday today, so wherever she is right now, I wish my wife, Melissa, a happy birthday. Next, probably a little more importantly, and Alderman Kelly, I apologize, I didn't think this through as well enough, and don't mean to step on your toes with something here, but had some conversations about executive sessions such as to discuss some of the items that we tabled last week, and I threw out a couple dates, and then something else kind of came into my mind, so I wanted to just call a special City Council meeting in order to hold an executive session on Thursday, March 28th, 2024, at 5:30 PM, Council chambers at City Hall to discuss these personnel matters at the request of the employees.
All right, second.
Thank you. And I'm done, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jobson. We don't need a vote, because two people said okay to it, so, very good. So, Ms. Merritt, if you put that on the, on the schedule, thank you. Anybody else? And since Alderwoman Newton.
I don't know if I, I missed that, but was there a time for that, for that meeting?
5:30. Yep.
Okay.
And in my hearing, 5:30, I just want to make sure it's clear, so the specialists of the public know since we're doing a special meeting to go into exec. Is it 5:30?
Yes.
I'll say it again.
Okay, that's what the two called? Okay. Alderman Jobson, do you have something else?
If I need to say it out loud again, I'll say it out loud again.
Say it, let's do it, just to make sure.
Just clear. I'm calling a special City Council meeting in order to hold an executive session on Thursday, March 28th, 2024, at 5:30 PM in Council chambers at City Hall to discuss these personnel matters at the request of the employees.
All right, second.
Very good, okay. Good, we have two people asking. Very good. Ms. Merritt, again, put it on the schedule, please. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? And since I'll follow Alderman Jobson, I'd be remiss, I usually don't, but since he did, I want to congratulate my son and certainly my family. We just had our fifth grandson. My son's in the military and just got back, so we were able to see him and then we were able to be there, so that was pretty cool, so, thank you too, and I'm very happy about that, so. Anyone else? Very, okay, we'll go to our four areas of discussion, community development, public safety, public works, and finance. The first one's community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderman Reinhardt will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a third consideration ordinance for case ORD 24-01, amending chapter 17 of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, entitled zoning by amending 17.08-1, use matrix to allow bed and breakfast and reception facility as a special use in the CT Commercial Transitional Zoning District. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Is there anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a third consideration ordinance for case ROW 24-01, being the request of the City of Davenport to vacate a portion of unimproved Marquette Street right-of-way located south of West 76th Street. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number three is a third consideration ordinance for case REZ 24-01, being the request of the City of Davenport to rezone approximately 31.9 acres of land at 2800 Eastern Avenue from SIC Institutional Campus District to CT Commercial Transitional District and establish a planned unit development in accordance with the submitted preliminary plat. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item moves on. Before we get into item number four, I'm going to bring up Director Berger to talk about the next four items that are, the next four resolutions that are before us. Director Berger.
Thank you. Bruce Berger, Community and Economic Development. So the next four items are all related to city home funding, and kind of a little bit of a just primer on those four. The first one is actually a request for home funding for a Lytec project, a low-income housing tax credit project, sometimes called Lytec projects. Those are state credits that are usually awarded about this time of year. You apply in the spring, developers do, they're bigger affordable housing rental projects. The first project listed there is by Vera French Mental Health Center. They actually applied last year, and so they did what is sometimes a bit more common. Developers will apply for those state credits. It's highly competitive, and if they're awarded those credits, that's usually announced in the summer or fall, then they will come forward to the city if they are requesting city home funds. So that's what Vera French is doing, and that's what item number four is. They are now coming forward for a project that they were awarded successfully last year at the state level. The next three, five, six, and seven, by Commonwealth Companies, Gradus Development, and Newberry Living, are three projects that they're applying for this year at the state level, so they will be applying next month, early April, for Lytec credits, and what they've done is apply early for city home funds to get what we sometimes just call a softer conditional commitment. It's a lot of work to do that, and so not a lot of folks do that. That's why those three are on there. The last point I would just mention real quick is that because in January, you all approved a conditional development agreement for the Annie Wittenmeyer campus, which the city owns, and there were two projects that you heard they intend to apply for Lytec credits in April as well. That is still the case. They've just decided to go with the more common method of not applying for city home funds until after the announcement, so that's why you don't see those on the agenda. And there may be other projects as well that are applying for Lytec this round that did not apply for city homes, so, confusing. If you have any other questions, let me know.
Thank you, Director Berger. Resolution number four is conditionally approving the city home funding application for the Carols Village Apartments Housing Project in the 800 block of Harrison Street. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward. You have five minutes.
Kerry Eklund, and I don't want to speak in opposition to any of these four necessarily. I don't want to necessarily speak in favor of any of them either. The first one seems, on the face of it, to be a good idea. I do want to point out that somehow, none of the programs that the city has and the state has encourage homeownership purchase or renovation or anything for low-income homeowners or homebuyers, and I have not understood how there are programs around the city where if you're going to be evicted, they might pay a month's of your rent, but if you're going to be foreclosed on, there's essentially no one.
Sir, do you have anything regarding specifically the home funding application?
Okay, the 800 block of Harrison Street, I was gonna, I was only gonna, I was only gonna speak once, but if you want me to speak individually to each project, I can do that. Speaking of 800 block of Harrison Street, that's in an area where a lot of houses were previously demolished. I assume that's around, well, anyway, I can guarantee you there were a lot of previously demolished houses there, unless I'm thinking of a different block, in which case they might want to demolish some houses to put this up, but I'm assuming they're thinking of a vacant lot, or an empty space next to an existing building. So if this is some sort of mental health transitional thing, then by all means, that's great. Like I said, I'm really concerned that we have these programs that, not necessarily this one, because there's the other three, and I may speak to those, although I was only going to speak once, but, but low-income housing subsidies tend to be landlord subsidies, and that the money doesn't actually go to the person that allows them to choose where they want to live. It goes to certain landlords who are approved, and hopefully they're all decent landlords, you know, I'm not, I'm not condemning any one of these, but somehow the money never seems to really help the people who need it the most and who are taxed at a far higher rate than they should be to subsidize people for programs they don't qualify for. So I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and stop for a minute, but I may, I may address one of the other ones here. I just think we have a city, a government that is hostile to poor people across the board, and I want to point out that the community economic development person said recently, they were talking about the Dream Home Program, which is housing-related, it's not, it's, it's similar. I think I read in the paper that the lowest income that you could be to apply to buy a house from the city of Davenport was $43,000 a year, and if I have that wrong, if it's $33,000, I apologize, but $43,000 a year sticks in my head as low income, the lowest income that the city will help homebuyers, and that leaves out everybody cleaning incontinent people in all the nursing homes. They get to pay extra taxes.
I'm struggling to piece this together with how it relates to...
It's, it's, it's an overall housing thing. To me, all of the housing issues are kind of connected, and affordability, but let me just say, with, with 800 Harrison, as far as I know, I would, I would, you know, if, I'm going to blank on the name again, if Carols Village, if Vera Franch, if Vera French wants to build housing that people with mental illness can sign up for, I'm all in favor of that, you know, the more houses, the better, so for that, the more houses, the better.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern and state your name and address or ward, please. You have five minutes.
Hi, there. My name is Stacy Kaiser-Willy. I'm the Executive Director for Vera French Housing, and I live in Wilton, Iowa, actually. I just wanted to say thank you to the City of Davenport and the city staff that have worked with us for many months to bring this application forward. Also, thank you to Marion, who's also been a strong advocate, and these low-income housing tax credits enable us to keep the rents very low, to help people that need affordable housing, and so we're very thankful to the City of Davenport and very appreciative to allow us to be able to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this resolution? Seeing no one, is there anyone from the council? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you. If I could ask you to come up again, please, ma'am? So, I know that in your role, certainly in your role of working with Vera French, if you, just briefly, talk about what you offer to people across the Quad Cities and your units? If you could do that briefly.
Yeah, I was going to say, my, my CEO is here, Dr. Richard Whitaker as well.
Please come up, sir.
But Vera French Housing, we've been in existence since the early 90s. We offer scattered site housing with supports, of course, because we're a part of Vera French Community Mental Health Center, but also supports in the community as well. Again, we have scattered sites. We also purchased some public housing from the City of Davenport, working with Bruce and his team last November, and we, we stay full because there is a need for housing, and there's a need for housing that everyone can afford, and we just, you know, again, appreciate the opportunity, but we do have mini apartment buildings, we have multiplex units, duplexes. We also have what some people call group homes, but houses that are staffed for people that need a little bit higher level of care.
And also to answer your question, Alderman, my name is Richard Whitaker. I live in Davenport on Emerald Woods, and I'm the CEO of Vera French Community Mental Health Center. Vera French Community Mental Health Center really is the supportive part of permanent supportive housing that we provide through Vera French Housing, and those supports include a whole range of services that range from residential all the way down to the most basic outpatient services, home-based services, that kind of thing, but it's all about providing supports, so that we're not just providing affordable housing, or very affordable housing, but supportive affordable housing, which means that it, that it's safe and it's, and it's comfortable, and it's, it's, it's a good place for people long-term, because the folks who we typically see in our, in our housing have some, some challenges, that they need some support from time to time, sometimes a lot of times, and Vera French does that regardless of ability to pay.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you for the work you do.
Thanks, ma'am.
If I could, if I could, please, Mr. Bruce, if you could come up as well, just for a second. I think we had this conversation recently, but let's go through it again, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but could you talk a little bit about the programs that the city is involved in or involved with community partners with, with housing, single-family homes as well, please?
Sure. So, the home dollars that we're talking about here, as well as CDBG, we can use to assist a number of different programs, and actually, it's a good reminder that here in a couple weeks, we're going to do a little work session on that as well, to kind of, you know, what some of the programs we have in terms of neighborhood reinvestment, but in terms of homeowners specifically, we have a urban homestead program where the city will acquire an abandoned house, sometimes it was a rental, but it's always vacant, and will rehab it and then sell it to a low to moderate income homeowner. We have some down payment assistance programs that assist homeowners with buying a home, and they're for low, they're exclusively for low to moderate income homebuyers, which are at or below 80% of median family income. We have, our dream program has a homebuyer component, so every year, we have up to 10 homeowners that have been assisted through that program. That one is in the central city, not limited to just afford low to moderate income homebuyers, but it is in the central city, which is a low to moderate income area, so that's just a few of what... So that's just a few of some of the programs we have.
And also, we've assisted Habitat.
Oh, right, exactly. Yeah, so home funds have... We've put those funds into helping subsidize the construction of new homes that Habitat for Humanity Quad Cities built.
And also lots, I believe. We've helped assisted Habitat with some lots as well.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Alderman Kelly?
Thank you very much. If the folks from Vera French will come up, I have a question. I don't know who would answer it. Since 2020, COVID has been upon us, and we're now a little stir-crazy. And the folks that had mental health issues that didn't have... I mean, they had them, but they were at the back of their head. Now they're at the forefront, and they're not as severe as some of these folks are out there. These people are in need of homes, too. So what are your levels of... God, I guess, I don't know what the correct word of that, the correct wording of that. So I would love to meet with you, because I know folks that aren't swinging from the rafters, but you know, there's issues, and I shouldn't have said it like that, but you know what I'm saying? Because I grew up, I'm aging myself by saying that. But I'm just saying there's folks that are in desperate need, and they fight with some of the issues that they have because of COVID. And they don't reach out for help. So I would love to sit down and just have a conversation of how can I assist some of these folks in my neighborhood to get into some of your facilities?
Yeah, absolutely. We'd love to sit down and tell you more about us.
For sure, thank you.
And I think one important feature of Carol's Village Gardens is that six units are specifically reserved for individuals recovering from homelessness. And, you know, with all of the supports right next door, and we built it right next to the Carol Center, right at 808 North Harrison is the Carol Center, right next door, 820 is this new property, 30 units. Those are all the supports and services necessary to help people who are recovering from homelessness, to get back into the workforce if they're ready, to get the supports they need for their relationships, for their livelihood, for everything they want to bring back into their life that they lost because of mental illness.
For sure. So I guess I want to expand on this, as you bring that up. What's the timeframe? So this is something we probably could talk about sidebar, but you're talking about people from homeless. What is the timeframe to help them, to assist them to have a place to live, a guaranteed place to live?
You mean when the building open?
No, he's saying you help folks from homelessness. So what is your timeframe of helping somebody that's homeless with a guaranteed place to live? Is it six months? Is it a year?
Oh, they, no, they can live there as long as they, you know, comply with the terms of their lease. So it's something that there's no timeframe, there's no time limit. So it, you know, it'd be a wonderful apartment, just like any of the other apartments that are going to be there. And the other, I think the other thing, too, maybe you were asking, but Vera French has a wonderful continuum of care. So the residential care facilities are the two highest levels of care. And then we go down to our HAB Homes, which some might consider, you know, say, group homes. It's more of a common term for people that, you know, kind of a step down, but still need some staffing, still need some assistance.
I have one in my neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah. And then the apartments, so like the 12plex.
Got an apartment building in my neighborhood, too.
So then we have the multiplex, the duplexes, and more the independent component, but still with those supports, those voluntary supports that people can take advantage of. And Carol's Village Gardens, right next to the Carol Center. If you've never been to the Carol Center, I urge you to come take a tour. Come see what we're doing. There's a meal, people can do laundry, programming, so much assistance there that is available to the community.
Right on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else from the council, this item will move on. We'll move on to item number five, a resolution conditionally approving the City Home Funding Application for the Enclave at Sheridan Housing Project in the 5,000 block of Sheridan Street. Is there anyone from the public?
Gary Eklund. Because I've had a lot of jobs, and I just want to say, too, if anybody is interested about what they were talking about, the Carol Center, people, a lot of people...
Sir, I'm interested in hearing about the resolution conditionally approving the City Home Funding Application
Yes, sir.
for the Enclave at Sheridan Housing Projects.
I would have been finished already, saying that that was the old United Neighbors. But okay, I will move on to this. Because I have had a lot of jobs, and some of them were delivery jobs, I've been into most buildings in the city, most apartment buildings multiple times. 5,000 Sheridan is an existing apartment complex with a whole lot of apartment buildings. No, it's a new one. Am I thinking of... I'm getting it mixed up with 53rd 4900? What, there's a Sheridan, there's an apartment complex behind like the Auto Zone on Sheridan? And apparently, I'm getting this mixed up?
Yes.
Okay, so this is new housing?
This would be new housing.
Okay. Well, that's good. It might make sense for some of what you guys tore down around Palmer, and five points. I don't want to speak against new housing. I do have a concern that the city property tax people have explained to me that they charge the lowest income homebuyers extra property taxes.
Sir, again, we're talking very specifically...
And I am very specific, I am very specifically...
About an application for one project. And I would like you to stay on that particular project.
I am very specifically saying that me, as a person who has suffered serious financial crime and hardship and is in danger of going a foreclosure who pays more than my fair share of my property taxes, I don't think that I should pay extra so that rich people can have investment properties. Now, that may be sounding like I am speaking against this, and maybe I kind of am, because you can have two things. I could be in favor of housing, and I can be in favor of not forcing poor people to pay for rich people's profits in housing. So I'm kind of conflicted about this one. Like I said, I was mixed up. I thought it was the existing housing that was going to get status. So on the one hand, we need new housing. There's a housing crisis that's been caused by the city and other entities tearing down houses for profit and because they don't like the people who live in those houses. So on the one hand, we need new houses. On the other hand, it's not fair to make the poorest homebuyers in the city pay. Not that they do, but if anyone, if anyone on the city council had a conflict of interest when it came to voting for tax benefits for themselves, I would hope that they would announce that from the city council and explain that if they had a conflict... Let's say if one of you guys were, if one of you, if one of you people...
Mr. Eklund, you are way off topic again.
No, I'm speaking specifically to this topic. If one of you people on the city council had a financial investment in this specific property and were going to benefit from it, I would expect you, as a matter of course, to divulge that from City Hall and say, "I, Mr. Kyle Grip, I have a financial interest in this discussion, so I'm going to recuse myself." I'm not saying you do, I believe you probably don't. But if you did have a financial interest in this project, it should be announced from City Hall. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public?
Good evening. Vice President of Commonwealth, Tyler Sheeran. First and foremost, would like to thank Bruce and Dawn for their ongoing collaboration as they reviewed Commonwealth's application. And also appreciate your guys' time in reviewing our application as well. To Bruce's point, it was kind of atypical for us to submit the application prior to going into, I have a finance authority to request the full funding for this project, but it was our preference to kind of have a proactive approach here. And with that, if we are fortunate enough to receive the tax credits that we're seeking this summer, it just puts us one step ahead to be able to get these units online quicker than kind of coming out on the backside. So with that, thank you again. If there's any questions, happy to address them.
Thank you. Let's see if there's any other public with comment first. Is there anyone else from the public who's here to comment on this item? All right, seeing no one, we'll go to council with comment. Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. And item number six is a resolution conditionally approving the City Home Funding Application for the Fairmount Apartments Housing Project in the 4,300 block of Fairmount Street. Anyone from the public here to comment?
Gary Eklund, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe these are existing units? These are new units, too? 4,300, it's up by the school. Is it on the other side? Right now, there's existing apartments between what, once upon a time, was a Kmart and grade school. There's existing apartments in there. So this would maybe be on the other side of the grade school, north of the grade school? Perhaps? Maybe, maybe not. Again, I have a concern about making the poorest people pay for wealthy people's investment properties. And that's been the situation now. I know Mr., the head of the Economic Community and Economic Development Project, the head of the Community and Economic Development, whatever, and an alderwoman had a back and forth about some supposed assistance for low-income housing. I still don't see it. What I see is the low-income people in the city of Davenport paying to subsidize wealthy people instead of wealthy people paying to subsidize and help poor homeowners. Because I tell you what, if the city had a motto, the city had one motto, "Community and Economic Development, City Hall, everything," it would be, "The job of the city is to come down hard on the lowlifes on behalf of the higher-class citizens."
Sir, do you have any comments related to this very specific project?
I specifically, they've already raised my property taxes far above what they're supposed to be. I should not have to pay for wealthy people's investments.
Thank you for your time. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address, or ward, please. You have five minutes.
Hi, Danielle Welch-Massie with Gratis Development. I live in Indianapolis, Indiana. I happen to be in Davenport. My parents live in Davenport, so it's nice to visit them. With Gratis Development, we are proposing this new construction development. It will be, to clarify, it will be across the street from the existing apartments. So it's currently an undeveloped lot. Here to answer any questions for anyone, or if you just want to talk after the meeting, you can catch me then. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Alderman Kelly?
Young lady, before you sit down, help me. Help me understand this. You said the existing apartments. What are you talking about?
So there's existing apartments called Fairmount Pines.
Is that the one that they just renovated?
I'm not sure if they just renovated. It is right next to Buchanan across the street, across 43rd Street.
Those were the whole projects.
So this will be across Fairmount.
Okay.
And there's a large parcel that's undeveloped. And so we have a purchase agreement for a portion of that parcel to be developed on.
Thank you so much.
Seeing no one else from the council, this item will move on. And then we have item number seven, which is a resolution conditionally approving the City Home Funding Application for the Priester Building Housing Project at 601 Brady Street. Is there anyone from the public?
Gary Eklund, I don't know who owns this, if it's still owned by two wealthy lawyers, and maybe I'm wrong on that, too, because I do make mistakes and I didn't do any research. But if wealthy people own this building and they're putting it in as an investment to increase, you know, everybody who's worth a million dollars wants to be worth $10 million, and I don't blame them. Hey, you're worth $10 million, you want to be worth $100 million? I don't blame them. But if this is owned by wealthy people who are out to get wealthier, I do not understand why low-income workers would pay extra taxes to subsidize their development. And it's particularly annoying to look at 601 Brady and to think that this does not come close to making up for the houses that the city of Davenport and Palmer demolished. And I will stop there. But poor people should not have to pay to subsidize rich people.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Is there anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. We'll move on to item number eight. I'm going to bring up Director Berger once again to give some insight onto items number eight and item number nine, and then we'll go through the process of discussion on those.
Bruce Berger, Community and Economic Development, again. So these two, eight and nine, actually are part of the same project. Every little backup is that the analysis of impediments for fair housing and the housing needs assessment are two things that HUD requires entitlement communities who receive CDBG funds, like the city, to do every five years. So every five years, you need, cities across the country need to do these two analysis pieces to allow for a five-year planning process. And that's what you do when you apply for Community Development Block Grant Funds. So it's time again to do that. Probably 10 years ago, I think, was the first time that we started working with both Moline and Rock Island. And so Bedendorf is not an entitlement community, so they don't receive CDBG funds annually. But three of the four Quad Cities do, and we found that if we band together and get on the same five-year cycle, it actually can save some funding. So the last couple of times, the city has been the lead, the city of Davenport has been the lead, and we've requested quotes. And then we entered into intergovernmental agreements with Rock Island and Moline. This time, Moline is in the lead. They went out for quotes. We have two good consultants. They're partnering together, but they're each getting paid individually. So the city of Moline has set that up with separate contracts. Those dollar amounts are below $50,000 in terms of the city's commitment, so it doesn't actually meet your normal standard to have it be a separate resolution. But because we need to have a 2080 agreement, they're both on your agenda separately. So that's what those are about. Glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Director Berger. We'll start with item number eight, then, which is a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement among the city of Moline, Illinois, the city of Rock Island, Illinois, and the city of Davenport, Iowa, to complete a regional housing needs assessment. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item moves on. Item number nine is a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement among the city of Moline, Illinois, the city of Rock Island, Illinois, the city of Davenport. Sir, can you sit down, please? Thank you. I'll reread, "A resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement among the city of Moline, Illinois, the city of Rock Island, Illinois, and the city of Davenport, Iowa, to complete an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice." Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Please state your name and address, or ward. You have five minutes.
Gary Eklund, this is an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. That is very, very rich for the Davenport city government to be looking into an analysis of impediments to fair housing when in the city of Davenport, there's no greater impediment to fair housing than the city. To quote, "We have different rules for lowlifes in low-life neighborhoods and higher-class citizens in higher-class neighborhoods." That's the official position of the city's code enforcement department for the last three years. No greater impediment to fair housing than the city of Davenport.
All right, thank you.
David Anderson, 5th Ward. I study this as much as humanly possible. The only thing I'd really want to comment about is the no bid on this project declaration in the paperwork, because I'm a paperwork etiquette and protocol kind of guy. The pages agreements with no bids, the blank exhibits, A, B, totally blank. More importantly is what I found, Moline bid sheet. I lived in Moline for a very long time, followed them. They are quite excellent. Kind of like it better here. Also, was that cost and budget? Cheap, cost savings, and projects bundled. This is absolutely fantastic for $78,003 different figures. I'm horrible at financing, so I'm glad these guys graduated top of their class. And I think it's wonderful, and I support Moline. We're used to, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item moves on. Item number 10 is a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of vacated public right-of-way, that being a part of West 43rd Street line between El Rancho Drive and Rodeo Road. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item moves on. And our final item in community development is a motion approving the allocations for year 50 Community Development Block Grants, CDBG funds, and Home Investment Partnership Funds. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Alderman Reinerts, will you please set our agenda?
Thank you. I make motion to place items one through 11 on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The agenda has been set. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Griffin, Alderman Reinerts. The next area is public safety.
Thank you, Alderman Griffin. Alderman Reinerts. The next area is public safety. Alderman Jobson and Alderman Tim Dunn will discuss. Alderman Jobson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item under the public safety agenda is a resolution approving street, lane, and public ground closures requested, excuse me, requests on the listed dates and times for outdoor events. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, project renewal Fitfest, 906 West Fifth Street, 7:00 AM, 12:00 PM, Saturday, April 20, 2024. Closures, West Sixth Street from Gaines Street to Marquette Street, Warren Street from West Fifth Street to West Sixth Street. Next, Brian Dorfeld, the city's Spring Classic, Brady Street Stadium, 3603 North Brady Street, 7:30 AM to 11:00 AM, Saturday, April 20, 2024. Closures, East George Washington Boulevard from Brady Street to Farnham Street, Farnham Street from East George Washington Boulevard to East Thirty-second Street. And last, Cornbelt Running Club, Quad City Times Big Seven and Prairie Farms Quick Mix, Saturday, July 27, 2024, 4:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Closures, Brady Street from River Drive to Kirkwood Boulevard, Kirkwood Boulevard from Brady Street to Jersey Ridge Road, Jersey Ridge Road from Kirkwood Boulevard to Middle Road, Middle Road from Kirkwood Boulevard to McCollin Boulevard, McCollin Boulevard from Middle Road to River Drive, East Fourth Street from Main Street to River Drive, with East Fourth Street from Pershing Avenue to River Drive closed beginning at 1:00 PM Friday, July 26. East Third Street from Main Street to River Drive, with East Third Street from Iowa Street to River Drive closed beginning at 1:00 PM on Friday, July 26 to set up finish line. And then East Second Street from Main Street to Perry Street, East Fifteenth Street from Brady Street to Perry Street, Perry Street from East Fifteenth Street to East Fourth Street, Leclerc Street from East Second Street to East Fourth Street, beginning at 11:00 AM on Friday, July 26. Iowa Street from East Third Street to East Fourth Street, beginning at 1:00 PM Friday, July 26. River Street from McCollin Boulevard to Hillcrest Avenue. And I would rather run that course than read it. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on these items?
Judith Lee, Second Ward. I would just like to ask, this is going to be another, a lot of people downtown, and during the St. Patrick's, there were people parked on the grass at 324 Main Street. And I would just, and there's pictures on the internet. They basically filled up the grassy area. So I would like to request the city to make sure that that area is not used for parking for anything going on downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read those under Section A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera. First, RME Courtyard, 121 West Second Street, outdoor area, recurring temporary license, license type, Class C liquor on premises. Next, Assumption High School, 1020 West Central Park Avenue, recurring temporary event, license type, Class C liquor on premises. And then we have those items on Section B, license renewals, which I do not read, but they're there for review. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on any of these items? Anyone from council? Alderman Tim Dunn?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about the item with Hawkeye Sports and Bar, Bar and Grill. I just received a email the other day, and one thing that stands out on that email is out of 71 calls to the Davenport Police Department, 56 of those calls were without any issues. 56 out of 71. It's kind of ridiculous. We've got a lot more things to do with the Davenport Police Department than to waste our time. If I could, if Chief Bladel could step up and give me any information that he has on this issue.
Mayor, elected officials, Jeff Bladel, your chief. As a part of the licensing renewals each year, we do do a review of calls for service, and we usually go back a year for each establishment. But for this establishment in particular, my numbers are a little bit different, so I'm curious to where yours came from. But 23 calls for service is what we had in a year time period there. Three disturbance calls, eight noise complaints. Three disturbance calls were one fight between two people. The other were two people wanting to be removed from the establishment. So the establishment has called on all those. They initiated those calls. When we compare calls for service from all of our establishments, when we look at these licensing, this does not compare anywhere close to a lot of the other establishments we deal with. And I can just give one example. One example that we just went through a public discussion on is about 168% higher in calls for service than this particular establishment.
Thank you. Can I call up Nicole Gleason? There was an issue on some lighting out there also?
Hi, good evening, Nicole Gleason, Public Works Director. So it's my understanding, I wasn't there personally, but last August, there was a meeting between elected officials, staff in Mid-American Energy, reviewing those lights, and some repositioning of the lights was done to make sure it was directed appropriately on the facility. But as a follow-up measure, because we still have received a few complaints, we are going to have a third party just give it another review, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. All right, thank you.
Right here. Back to you, Mr. Jobson.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? Alderman Kelly?
Thank you, I appreciate it. Chief Bladel? Thank you, sir, I appreciate your time. So I'm having a problem with your numbers compared to the numbers, because I'm like, RT Dunn. I received an email too, so it's interesting to me when stuff doesn't dive up. So I need to know, and I need clear, who do we get this information from? Can we get it directly from the police department? Or do we need to have it filtered down to us?
Well, you can directly ask me, and I'll make sure you get it. But for that year time, it could be just that they ran a different time period. So we usually run a year time period when we're looking at renewals of licenses. And that's what this was, from March 19, 2023 to March 18, 2024.
Okay, I just wanted to know that I can actually reach out to you to get this information that I'm in need of. I could be petty, but I'm not going to. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else from council? Seeing none, then I would ask Alderman Tim Dunn to please set our agenda.
I would like to make a motion to put items on public safety to the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All pose same sign. That closes public safety. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson and Alderman Tim Dunn. The next area is public works. Alderman Rick Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Rick Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is the first consideration of an order en amend ending Chapter 12.16 entitled curbs of the municipal code of Davenport, Iowa, by eliminating sections and updating language. And before I ask for public to comment, can we have the city engineer come up here and give us an overview of this project, what's going on here?
Brian Shatz, the engineer. The currency code reads that the curbs are the property maintenance of the adjacent owners. That would mean anything that would have to occur, they would have to go ahead and fix that at a 50-50 cost. In consideration that the curb acts as a part of the street as well as a drainage device, we would recommend that the code be updated so that that portion is taken out, and that would be a property maintenance of the city.
Perfect. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And I'll read the next two items and call them back up to ask first. Item number two is the first consideration of an order en amend ending Section 13.34.130 entitled storm sewers of the municipal code of Davenport, Iowa, by updating language for the storm sewer inspections. And then item number three is the first consideration of an order en amend ending Section 16.28.050 entitled sewers of the municipal code of Davenport, Iowa, by updating language for sanitary sewer inspections and sewer extensions. Could you give us a little brief update on this one as well?
Within these two sections, they currently read that any privately constructed sewer, which would be any sewer as part of a residential subdivision, commercial or industrial, must be televised by our own sewer crews. We would like to modify that language to allow developers to go ahead and televise that using a private contractor, utilizing our specifications, as well as making sure everything was clean. Those videos would be given to engineering staff for review, so we can determine if there are any deficiencies prior to making a recommendation for approval.
Perfect, thank you. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address these two items? Council? Seeing none, these two items move on. Item number four is a resolution accepting work completed on the Goose Creek Trail Phase Two project by Midwest Concrete in the amount of $1,891,393.60. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution awarding a contract for the Forest Road, East Cumberland Road, the East 39th Street reconstruction project to NJ Miller in the amount of $524,395.25. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution awarding a contract for Lorton Place intersection at Lombard Street and Lorton Avenue reconstruction project to Midwest Concrete in the amount of $487,654.90. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution awarding a contract for the CY 2024 contract milling program to Porter Brothers Construction in the amount of $146,719.24. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution awarding the Davenport Municipal Airport five-year on-call aviation consulting and engineering services agreement to McClure Engineering. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Yes, Gary Eklund, I want to speak in opposition to this. I actually want to argue that it's time to shut down the Davenport Airport. As anyone who pays attention to the news knows, we have an extinction crisis. We have a climate change crisis, and airplanes contribute more to that than far more any other form of transportation. Most of our air travel, if someone wanted to go to New York City or Miami or wherever, they would go to Moline, and they wouldn't fly out of Davenport. It's my understanding that Davenport Airport primarily serves corporate jets for really rich people who want to fly in. I remember a few years ago, there was a discussion of the Davenport Airport, and they said that if we closed the Davenport Airport down, then corporate executives would not want to come to Davenport, because they would have to fly into Moline, and that that was just too much for a corporate executive to stand, that they would not come to Davenport, Iowa, if they were forced to fly into Moline. But to me, it seems to me like this is for corporate jets, and it's for super, super rich people, and that the entire Davenport Airport is a subsidy towards rich people, which everybody is forced to pay for. I, who haven't flown in decades and don't expect to, have to pay extra taxes to subsidize the Davenport Airport, which is primarily used by super rich people, who should be able to pay their own way and not rely on taxes. And I would suggest that we close down the airport, and that we make it not just a trailer park, but a trailer park where the individuals who own the trailers could own the lot, so that they would not have to pay lot rent, and that would address housing.
Can we get back on the topic? It's engineering services, please.
I'm opposed to spending any more money on the Davenport Airport, because the Davenport Airport is a subsidy for rich people who can pay their own way.
Thank you. Anyone else? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Garfield Park ADA access improvements. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. I'm excited for this, that's all I want to say. In my neighborhood, I'm liking to see some developments and things going on. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Colony Drive Brown Street to Gaines Street reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 11 is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Colony Drive Western Avenue to Ripley Street reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 12 is a resolution approving the purchase of wetland credits from Naham Marsh in the amount of $298,760 for the water pollution control plant and compost facility flood mitigation, stormwater, and effluent pumping system project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
Love to. I'd like to make a motion to move all 12 items to the consent agenda.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The agenda's set, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman. Rick Dunn and Alderman Kelly, the next area is finance. Alderwoman Newton and Alderwoman Lynch will discuss. Alderwoman Newton, please.
Thank you, Mayor Mattson. Tonight, Alderwoman Lynch and I have seven items to discuss on the finance agenda. The first item is a resolution setting a public hearing amending the FY 2024 operating and capital improvement budgets. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Is there anyone from council? Seeing none, this item moves on. Item number two, resolution setting April 10, 2024 as a date for sale of general obligation corporate bonds, Series 2024, and approving the preliminary official statement. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, this item moves on. Item number three, resolution adopting the CY 2024 city administrator's work plan. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this? Please state your name, address, or ward, sir.
Gary Eklund, I live in whatever ward. I didn't want to speak again, and I wish, like I said, I know there's more detail on the internet for people who have computers and don't suffer migraines as bad as I do. The city administrator's work plan, the sentence here, as I read it, is completely meaningless, although, I mean, it does say city administrator's work plan, but it doesn't say any details about what the work plan is. And if I'm familiar with the city administrators, any work plan that they have would be to the benefit of people who make over $100,000 a year and to the detriment of everyone else. And I wish there was more detail on this, and I apologize for even speaking to it, but I think I'm opposed to any city administrator's work plan, because it would be intended to hurt poor people and help rich people.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this item? Is there anyone from council? Seeing none, this item moves on. Next, item number four, resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the skate park improvement project. Anyone from the public wishing to speak to this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, this item moves on. Item number five, resolution approving a five-year contract extension for printer maintenance services with Managed Solutions Group of Dubuque, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Is there anyone from council? Seeing none, this item moves on. Next, item number six, a resolution approving a one-year agreement with the Humane Society of Scott County, Iowa, for animal protection and shelter services. Prior to asking to hear from the public, I would take a point of privilege to ask someone from staff to please come up and give an explanation of the factual background of what took place and what led us to today.
Perfect. Thank you, Alderwoman Newton, for the opportunity to present here where we've been and where we are. So before you, on the screen, it's just an overview of the last three approved contracts between the city of Davenport and the Humane Society of Scott County. We are longstanding partners for these services. And I will draw your attention to the bottom. So the most recent longer-term contract that was approved was set for July 1 of '22 through June 30 of '25. That contract included a base fee of $391,000, which was set to increase by 3% thereafter for the future years of that term. Some other contract terms that were included in that particular contract was continuing to provide a vehicle for the society's use, also the provision of fuel from the city's fuel islands, and then a $50,000 capital contribution, along with an agreement to purchase some radios and maintain those for dispatching. So that brings us to this past August, so August of '23, we received a cancellation notice from the Humane Society, which was set to be effective this past February. Their request to continue services was... Their request to continue services was around $1.4 million annually. And given that the general fund is really the primary funding source to fund this contract, we began due diligence in exploring alternatives, given that the amount was nearly $1 million over what the current contract was. And that is something that's a standard practice for us when we start to see contracts come in high. So moving forward, last fall, we continued to evaluate what some of those alternatives could be. We explored an internal civilian model that would have been housed through the police department, and we could have achieved a few different economies of scale with this. Again, these were just the three primary benefits, but one being that we could diversify the funding source and utilize some other resources that we have. We have an existing management structure, and we're already paying the overhead for things like HR, finance, IT. And then lastly, the ability to consolidate call data with our police department and neighborhood services departments, and some of the job duties of staff that we already had. That brought us, after evaluating all of that in the financial model that was associated, to making a recommendation to the council in early January to adopt this internal model. Concurrently, we had brought forward an amendment to at least get us through the current fiscal year, so that services could be provided through June 30, and that was approved in the amount of $250,000. We determined, the council determined, that the desire was to return to the negotiating table with the Humane Society in an attempt to reach an agreement, which would be in the best interest of everyone involved if we could reach terms that were agreeable. So there was a negotiating committee that was formed that included council members and staff members, and negotiations with the Humane Society resumed. So an update, pleased to present a tentative agreement to you tonight that has been reached with the Humane Society. I want to thank them for all of the dialogue and the exchange of proposals over the last couple of weeks as we work to get this language just right. So the contract that is before you for consideration next Wednesday night is an agreement term beginning July 1 of this year through June 30 of '25, would increase the base contribution, the fee, to $800,000. The city would contribute an additional $50,000 towards the hiring of a fundraising consultant to help us work towards a more sustainable model over time. We will relinquish the non-voting board seat that was included in the last contract. That was a new add. So again, we're saying we will relinquish that. Some other terms that remain in this contract are continued use of the vehicle and the provision of fuel. We'll also continue to provide those radios and any associated maintenance, and we'll agree to conduct training for the Humane Society's officers and staff that are involved in these services. And lastly, and I think the thing that I know we're all looking forward to, is the establishment of a task force. So the agreement, again, that's before you, establishes a joint task force between the Humane Society and the city, and possibly some of our other governmental partners, to really evaluate how we can produce a sustainable, more longer-term contract that delivers these important services to our residents. And we have agreed to contribute 50% of the required staff time towards any of these projects. I would anticipate likely some ordinance updates coming out of this group and possibly some programmatic changes. So again, we at the staff level are looking forward to collaborating with you as the council, the Humane Society staff, and their board to hopefully achieve that sustainable business model moving forward with an agreement date, I believe here for next steps. We've set next February of '25 as our benchmark date to evaluate where we're at in terms of that more longer-term agreement. So just quickly, next steps, you have this updated agreement before you tonight. The task force will conduct its first meeting before mid-April. We will develop a work plan as a task force and start assigning out roles and responsibilities, and who is going to take what pieces of this large project that is before us. We'll continue to meet monthly as a task force, and then again, with the ultimate goal to bring back a more long-term contract to you by February of next year.
Do we know who's on the task force?
Mayor, I would defer to you. That's your appointment.
I asked Alderman Burkholder if she would be the council representative, and she graciously accepted.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that. Is there someone from the Humane Society here? I'd like to hear from you before hearing from the general public. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Erica Gunn. I'm the executive director of the Humane Society. Thank you, Mallory, for the very nice overview. You made my speech a lot shorter. The Humane Society wants to thank the council members and staff members who met with us recently to help us move this forward in our contract negotiations, and the many citizens who have expressed their support for our mission and continuance of the contract as long-term partners. The Humane Society and the city were able to come to that one-year agreement, and that contract would last from July of 2024 this year through June 2025 with that payment of $800,000. We know that we have come to you guys with that amount of $1.3 million. That is the cost of what it takes to employ five animal protection officers, two dispatchers. We provide seven-day-a-week coverage, 8 to 5 and 8 to 7, depending on if it's a weekday or weekend. We also provide 24/7 on-call service after hours. And then we also pay for enough staff, food, medication, the building, utilities, repairs, all of that, for 3,000-plus animals a year inside that shelter from the City of Davenport. We recognize the effort that the city has put into this moving forward, because we know that that is a big ask, and you guys have made a 100% increase to the contract. And we know that that takes a lot of work on your end, and we truly appreciate that. It's a really great step in the right direction. Many people probably ask why we agreed to a significantly lower amount than we originally came to the table with. We want to be very transparent at that decision. So the Humane Society is very passionate about our mission, of course, we've been around for a long time, and we understand that if we stop providing that service, it's detrimental to animal welfare and our mission here in the community. Based on that and the fact that this agreement includes the required creation of that task force, which will be comprised of both the Humane Society representatives, a board member to two, members of city staff and city council, possibly other cities or county representatives, and the Humane Society of the United States would like to be involved as well. We are agreeing to cover services at that lower rate for this additional year. The goal of the task force is to evaluate those possible ordinances or program changes, and evaluate enforced licensing programs. We believe that with improvements in ordinances and enforcement, we can bridge this gap in payment and cost between, that cost between that $800,000 and that $1.3 that we were asking for, so that we can find a sustainable solution for all of us as continued partners. The active participation of city staff, city council, and our staff and board are really the key to this task force. I want to thank you guys for your time tonight, your time in the past, and we're really looking forward to getting started if this is approved.
Thank you. And thank you to you and the Humane Society on behalf of the council for working with the city and coming to the table in good faith to attempt to negotiate. Now, I'd like to hear from the public, if there's anyone here from the public that would like to comment. Please step forward, state your name, address, or ward, please.
Mary Johansson, first ward, and I want to thank the council and the mayor and the interim city administrator to make an effort to make this work. I was here when everybody was invited to say their piece about the need, and I'm glad that we all came to the point where we understand that it's important that these animals are taken care of because humans are failing. And the ordinances I hope that you guys can create can maybe help make these citizens a little bit more responsible for their care. But I'm very happy when I heard that this was happening, so good on all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Judith Lee, second ward. I just want to also thank council for tabling this, to allow it to be carried through, more negotiations, looking at the details of what needed to be done. And I think you folks have done a really good job, you and the Humane Society. And I just wanted to thank you for what you've done here, and I think it's going to move forward well, and I think you will be an excellent council.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? Now I turn to the council. Is there anyone from council wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, this item would pass or move forward. Lastly, item number seven was a motion directing the city administrator and related staff to implement an internal animal service unit and negotiate any related contracts or agreement. I'll take a point of privilege to remind the public that this matter had been tabled on more than one occasion. It is the staff recommendation and mine that this motion be deleted, so I would move to delete this motion. Hearing a second, do we need roll call? Oh, okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Just quickly, mention we, on the agenda, the items that are purchases of $10,000 to $50,000. And now I would move to Vice Chair Alderwoman Lynch and ask her to please set the agenda.
Thank you, Chair. I make a motion to please items 1 through 11 on the consent agenda, and 1 through 6 on the consent agenda. All in favor, or, I got a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And that concludes the finance agenda. I yield the floor back to you, Mayor Mattson.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton and Alderwoman Lynch. The next area, are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? There are not. And the next area is other reports of city officials? No. The next, will an alderman please move to go into executive, you can sit or stand, I guess.
I just want to talk.
No public comment tonight. Next, will an alderman move to go into executive, thank you, please. Yes. A motion has been moved in a second. Before I call Mr. Krupp to roll, I just want to let everybody know that council will adjourn the meeting after the executive session, will not return to council chambers. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll.
Newton?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
Burkholder?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
Reinards?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
R. Dunn?
Yes.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good, thank you. We'll go to executive session, folks, and then we'll adjourn from up there.